... to the flag, in the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, for our nation, and under God, and in this world, with liberty and justice for all.
Bender?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Dewarner?
Yes.
Sebo?
Yes.
I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Go move, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We need approval of the December 15th attendance. That's what we'll call it.
Go move.
Second.
Bender?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Dewarner?
Yes.
Sebo?
Yes.
So we have some appointments, and it looks like we're going to make approval on all of them at once.
Yes.
So got a year to hardship and grievance. Curtis, Sandy, Robert, and Luke Ryder to housing authority board, and Mark Oaklist to attorney general.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I need approval for the resolution committee.
Make a motion to approve the resolution committee motion.
Second.
Bender?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Bean? Dewarner?
Yes.
Sebo?
Yes.
We need a motion to enter into a one-year agreement with our city attorney.
We got to build for...
Which is also...
Most of the approved appointment, or the hiring of our senior. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we have a discussion to determine the mayors that could see, and Laura has some information.
I do, thank you. Give me the screen to my computer. Okay, so the decision for the council tonight is really how to proceed to fill this vacancy. There's two options that the council has. One is to fill the vacancy by appointment. So either council can appoint someone to the position who will remain in that position until the next election. And the other option is to hold a special election to fill the position. So I'm going to talk about each of those separately, so you understand like the timeline, the costs, that type of thing with each option that you have. So to fill the position by appointment, we would first have to publish notice. So that's not going to be filled tonight, because we do have to publish notice, and then the citizens would have 14 days to file a petition for a special election. If they did not want the vacancy to be filled by appointment. If you choose to go this route, you could appoint someone at your next meeting. You know, we could publish that notice yet this week. It has to be published no fewer than four, no more than 20 days before you fill. So the next meeting is likely when you would fill by appointment. For the citizens, if they do want to petition, they would need at least 200 signatures on that petition. If, like, let's say you choose tonight that you want to fill by appointment, those in Evansdale are like, no, we'd rather have a special election. They would need at least 200 signatures on the petition for them to force that special election. And that special election is actually the other option that you as the council have as well. And with a special election, the soonest that we could have that special election would be February 9th. And that is assuming that we would give notice to the county tomorrow. So if you decide tonight you want a special election, you give notice to the county tomorrow. As soon as the election would be, would be February 9th. Last, I understand the last special election that the city had cost about $5,000. And so let's just assume that's probably a ballpark figure for what a special election would cost this time around as well. Now, one thing, I talked with Mayor Beatty last week, his last day here in office. And he had asked about the possibility of there being a part-time mayor instead of a full-time mayor. I see no reason that that's not an option for you. Evansdale has the mayor council form of government, and the Iowa code doesn't specify whether it has to be full-time or part-time. You know, it's just a mayor and a city council. So I don't see any reason that that wouldn't be an option, if that's something that you want to consider. With that, one of the, I think the maybe biggest advantage to the city would be a cost savings. Your ordinances currently state that if you have a part-time mayor, that mayor would be paid $10,000 a year. I believe your currently the full-time position is around 52, is that right, Deanne? 50,000? So I mean, that would be a savings of $42,000 this year. So that might be something to consider. That's, you know, it's an option. Questions so far?
I have a question. I think with everything that we got going on facing in Evansdale, I don't think this is the right time to go part-time mayor. I had some other suggestions tonight if we get into that dialogue. But I think a part-time person would not be efficiently to do that job, is what we got in front of us. If everything was clean and green and done and in stone and wrote signs, I would agree possibly. But for now, I will not support a part-time mayor for the city with what's, what we have in the future to do.
I'm in agreement. We've got way too many projects on the table. Wastewater's going to be coming up and breathing down our neck. There will be wastewater plant. We also got the hockey road project. We've got a couple of, couple of roads and sewer projects that are coming up. Plus the property that we just bought and need somebody own that pretty much eight hours a day really pushing that property. Or that could really come back to bite us. And we just lost the person that, you know, was pushing that project. So, you know, my feeling is, is I talked to a couple of people about possibly going with the city manager and changing the format to go with a part-time mayor and a city manager who could actually accomplish what we need to accomplish. And actually manage these project type situation. And, you know, rewriting more of that song again, so.
I'm actually from the other side of the table, I guess. I think we have three main projects for it. I already know that Mayor Proton has been in contact and meetings with the engineers on the sewer plant and on the land, ego planning. It's just three projects that are ready made, and right now they're all under contract to engineers, and it's not that big a deal to follow. Even with a part-time mayor, the city's still run by the council. We have not lost any power. We still call the last shot. I think, of course, it's obvious that I could be back and Dick Dewarner. I think he's been around a long time. He's very savvy on what's going on in the city. Quite involved in it, has spent a lot of time with Mayor Beatty before he left. And I just think that we can get by with a part-time mayor. I have thought so for a long time, but naturally with a city mayor isn't going to say that. You know, because it's a $40,000 cut in pay. But I would be all for trying a part-time mayor till our next election. And I would be all for appointing Dick Dewarner.
I actually as well agree with you, Jean. As I feel like everything's set in motion as far as the big projects that we have this year. Talked to people that work in the city, they feel like they can manage it, no problem at all. We do have the ultimate say-so in the end about yeses or no's. Dick Dewarner, he's, I guess it's more so just hearing an authorization from him that he feels he could manage. Even in a part-time role, if he feels that he could, I as well would support him in that role.
And I think that's really what the discussion's all about as far as the part-time mayor. Is that I had indicated that I'm willing to serve on a part-time basis till the next election for another 11 months or a year. But even if the council decided to appoint me or someone else at the next meeting, as Laura said, it still gives the citizens 14 days to put that petition together. And I don't even think it's 200.
Okay, it's 154.
I think it's 200, because we have less than 5,000. And so 154 would be the 15% of the number of people who voted in the last election. But the code says 15% or, or 200. I think it's a minimum of 200. Let me pull it up quick.
Yeah, the citizens do have an opportunity then to object to that if they choose to do so. Because again, too, I feel like the citizens elected Mayor Beatty, and Mayor Beatty chose to put Dick Dewarner in this position. And so I feel like if we can manage it as far as the city goes, then I think we should uphold to that. And then if the citizens disagree, then they can get those signatures needed.
Well, I had talked to Troy about it. He wanted to make sure that, that as Proton, I would be willing to serve for whatever period of time. And I am on a part-time basis. I believe that we have a great city staff and that we could easily take care of business and move ahead in those 11 months.
I think if we had big problems in the city, then I would be totally against a part-time mayor. But I mean, you look at the staff we have on board, none of them really need direction as far as I'm concerned. They're all capable of taking care, and they're in good hands with the department head. So I don't see any real big problems, and...
Well, and you know, the other part of it is, for me anyway, in addition to staff, we have a pretty good council. That's pretty experienced. And so we're not going to get too far off the rails. But so what would be the timeline if, say, we did make the appointment on the 26th? We'll get to that about the next council meeting. There would be, what, 14 days for the citizens, or 20 days?
Yeah, so first of all, Deanne, I stand corrected, it is 154, because whichever is less, the 15% or the, or the 200. So it is, it is 154. The citizens have 14 days from when the notice is published.
Okay.
And so that does leave us some questions as far as timing, because if we publish notice tomorrow, since you meet every other week here, if we publish notice tomorrow, like technically they could still file that petition after you make the appointment, and you'd end up with a special election anyway. Now, if you still want to try to proceed with an appointment, you certainly can. You can do it at the next meeting, or you could even wait till the following meeting if you wanted to make sure that that full 14 days had passed before doing the appointment.
At what point can we, or do we need to make another appointment?
You have to do that within 60 days of Mayor Beatty's resignation.
So the next meeting would be the first one?
The next meeting would be the first opportunity, yeah. But if you did it at the following meeting, you still would be within that 60 days.
And the citizens then have 14 days, I'm getting confused there. 14 days from, from when? From when it's published, but yet they can't publish it until...
They can publish it tomorrow. I mean, we'll send it out to be published tomorrow, but they've got 14 days from when it's published.
From when it's published, not when an appointment has been made?
Correct. And the notice that's published will, if the council chooses to proceed with an appointment, the notice that is published will also state that there is that time to file the petition for special election. So, you know, people will be on notice if they see the publication as opposed to attend or view this council meeting.
I guess the question I'd have for Dick, if you can ask these questions. You work outside your home. So if you were a part-time mayor, what would the hour be a week that you'd be part-time mayor? And are you able to run the city and work your other employment that I know you do on the side without any conflicts or restrictions? It is, I'm leaving all names out of it, I'm just looking at operations. We've had a full-time mayor. The few times that I talked to Mayor Beatty, it sounded like it was really a full-time gig to get the job done, and then some. And I did hear some dissension and complaining in his voice sometimes when I did ask that couple of questions. So I really struggle with, are we thinking that? I'm not saying the city's off track, I'm not saying none of that. I'm just saying, I think for that land thing, I just don't think a part-time person can run trying to get that land development going. We got a lot of money invested, we don't know where the financing, where we're going to get all the money. We got a sewer plant that's been kicked down the road for three to four years that we're going to have to make decisions. We got a lot to up road that's supposed to go, I think, next year. I don't want to go into that now, but I just think there's a lot of things on the plate. But anybody that's in the position full-time is what they're going to need to really be on top of, rather than coming in here a couple hours a day or, or whatever it takes. I mean, how do you determine part-time, Deanne? Is it five hours a day, is it two hours a day, and 15 hours tomorrow? How is that appropriated for part-time mayor as far as hours work?
10 hours a week is what our code says.
10 hours a week? I don't think 10 hours a week could run the city effectively. I'm not putting any names to it. I just think anybody with good conscience with city budgets and financing and everything we got going on, I don't know how anybody... You do a great job, I know you probably be an asset in the situation. But I, I've never heard past mayor say to me that a part-time could work in this community. And I'm not going to support it. It has nothing to do with names on the appointment or ballot. I'm not going to support a part-time mayor. I, I'm in favor of a special election, to let the citizens vote who they want. If we can make that timeline and the citizens step up and that gets done to where it can be put up for a special election, that's what I would support from the citizen. I was elected by the citizen, and I feel that's the only right thing to do, let them have a say like they do every election time.
Can we talk a little bit more about the city manager role? If we went forward in the years ahead, where we just appointed a part-time mayor, we would want to have a city manager, correct? What are they, what's their title?
City manager, I mean...
City manager, basically, what they do, what they do is they totally manage the city from top down.
Right.
And they also handle all the financing, they take care of, you know, they basically work together with the court. They're really there to manage the town, but they're also there to sell it. A lot of times, we don't want to make decisions because we feel like we're on the other side of the street. They don't care. They make the right decision for the town. That's what I like about it. Another thing is that it's a continuous straight through. It's not any four years or a year, so-and-so mayor and, and, you know, two years, so-and-so mayor in two years. So you don't have that flip-flop. You have somebody that's involved from day one and stays through, so.
And there are a lot of towns around us that have those, correct?
The ones that...
So your boss is working on it right now?
The ones that typically do, actually, their growth rate is almost double the ones that don't.
Yeah.
You can take a look at that, or anything you can look at. You can almost tell when you go into a town that has a city manager compared to a town that doesn't have a city manager. Just by how clean it is and how taken care of it is, so.
I know, just the previous mayor and I had a discussion about a city manager, and he also seemed like he thought that was a great idea. So I have been thinking about that too for some time, and how it's something we should consider looking at.
Takes a lot off of our plate, and the politics kind of goes to the wayside. They give us the options, they give us all the information, the communications. Because that's one, one problem within this, is that I haven't had any communications. I found out Troy Beatty was leaving by Facebook, you know?
Yes, I did too.
Nobody told us anything. You know, that's, not good, not good. And you know, when they say, oh, we got a great council, well, we're not, we're not talking either, you know? And I think that if maybe if somebody was over the entire thing, gave us the options, it would allow us to be able to do our job, which is to make the decisions, not figure out the options, so.
Is it possible to fill a role like that in this next year?
So to change from the mayor council form now to the manager, the city manager form that you're talking about, there would have to be a special election for that as well.
Okay.
So you can change forms, once every six years. So once you do it, you're there for six years. But every six years that issue can be before the public has a ballot. But you'd have to do a special election if you wanted to change that horse now.
Could that be done same time as the special election for the mayor and make that organization be a part-time mayor and city manager?
Well, I was thinking about that as you were talking, and I mean, could it? I don't know why it couldn't, but I also don't know if you'd want it to be that way, because would it matter to anybody which direction you were headed? I mean, if you're going to appoint a mayor under a mayor council form versus under a manager mayor form?
You know, that, that might make a difference.
Well, because I, I think I know what you're trying to get to. We don't want to drop all these projects and throw our hands up. You know, we got a piece of property sitting out there that could really be a detriment to one. And we made decisions on that that had totally, the situation's totally changed. So we want to make sure that we've got somebody in there full-time to really sell that project, push that project, make the phone calls every day, and really, really go after. Because that's the only way it's going to be successful. You let it sit there for another year or two, and then, you know, what's the point?
Yeah, so, I mean, you do have, Dick now serving as the mayor pro temp, and he'll be in that role until someone gets appointed. But we also have to appoint someone within 60 days, or the county's going to have this special election to appoint a mayor.
Right.
And so I think we need to take care of that issue first, filling that vacancy, but not stop the conversation about a manager council form of government, if that's what you want, where you want to head. With the state of our scale. But, you know, I think that we need to focus on one issue first, because we've got a timeline.
So we could add that, we could add that to the general election as well?
Yeah, I don't know why.
Because you said that one takes a special election. If we're going to a special election, we'll be paid for two.
Yep. Yeah, I think you could do that at the general election. You know, the code says...
That would be for a court comparison, definitely would be there.
That there has to be a petition to the council. This one requires at least 25% of those who voted in the last regular city election. And according to the county, it was 1,024 people who voted in the last election to get that issue on a ballot. So I don't see why it couldn't be on the ballot at the general election though. You would just need to have that petition filed, well, and by you, I mean, in addition, filed by someone with at least 25% of the electors signing that.
Hey, Dick?
So let me, let me address what you were asking, Steve, about my other work obligations. I'm very flexible. And I don't actually see myself sitting in that office for a certain number of hours every day. I see myself in that office as needed. And if it means eight hours a day, it's eight hours a day. If it means nothing one day, I might not be here one day. I mean, that's, that's how I've always worked. I don't have artificial time periods where 40 hours, I gotta be here 40 hours. That's, that's why I am suggesting that I would work part-time. And do I think that I can handle and do everything that needs to be done? Absolutely. As far as the land goes, that's why we hired Chris Fishers. He's our guy. Troy wasn't going to be making calls and drumming up business. That's Chris's job. The other things we have going seem pretty manageable to me. I had a touch bases with, with Troy, just to see what he thought about the possibility of me doing it part-time. And he felt pretty comfortable with the fact that, that that's how it goes. Some days you work a lot of hours, some days you don't. He might have chosen, and other mayors, well, the last mayor before Troy, chose to be here eight hours a day, even though he, he might have spent another four hours at night. I'm not obligated to do that.
The mayor before him spent...
Yeah, if there's a meeting, that's right. I told him the same thing. If there's meetings I need to attend at night, I'll attend them.
Just because you're not in the office doesn't mean you're not thinking.
No, no. And that was the important point with, with Doug. He chose to do it the way he chooses to do it. So that's, that's kind of where I'm coming from. I believe that if I am allowed to serve part-time for the next 11 months, I think it would be a pretty good indication of if we want to go to a part-time mayor.
I agree with that.
And as far as the city manager, honestly, I see both sides of that, you know?
Why do we want to pay two men to do one man's job in a town of 4,800 people?
I've seen city managers who are like dictators. They're worse than some mayors, and, and somewhat less accountable, even though they're supposed to be accountable to a council. I've seen city managers who've been around longer than the councils, and they run that city. So that, that's my only concern. If you have a strong council, no problem.
Well, all I can say is I know my numbers, and if we're looking for the city to grow and, and, you know, be the best city that Evansdale can be, you know, like I said, take a look for yourself. Look at the numbers, look at who has city managers, look at who don't.
It's certainly worth considering.
I've done, I've done the whole one, so.
Do we have a charger for this? I have a problem with that.
Yeah.
Tom, I need to correct myself here. I'm looking at the code section, and the citizens can file their petition 14 days after the publication of notice or within 14 days of the appointment. So there's two opportunities there for the citizens to petition if the council chooses to go by appointment.
Or 14 days before the appointment?
Nope, it says within 14 days after publication of the notice or within 14 days after the appointment is made. So there's two opportunities.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
The council is whether, you know, Dick is mayor pro temp, he's still a member of the council so he can participate in this vote.
But their motion cannot be made tonight.
The, the motion to proceed by appointment or by special election can be made tonight. If there is a motion to appoint someone into the position of mayor, that actual, the motion of who to appoint will have to be taken up at a later meeting.
At that point, if you're upset from the motion, I would make the motion that we appoint Dick Beatty as part-time mayor.
Okay, but let's back up and just make a motion that you want to appoint a mayor to fill the vacancy.
Appoint a mayor, not a person.
Not, not specifically who.
Fair enough.
So one step at a time.
And what happens if like say Dick gets appointed? What happens to his council position?
Then it'd be the same process to fill that council position. And that's, that's true whether it's Dick or any other member of the council here. The council would then have to decide whether to fill that vacancy by appointment or to fill that vacancy by special election. And the same rules would apply as far as publishing notice. And then the citizens can also petition for a special election instead of appointment if that's the route that it goes.
Okay.
So Jane made a motion to make an appointment for mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
And the other one was like, oh yeah, we can do that for nine.
Where's that one?
Do that for nine? Yeah, but you know, that's an email saying, oh yeah.
Nine sounds better.
Just throw a number out there.
Well, but if they'll sign the contract for that, they'll probably care.
Well, the quality, we need a quality work too.
I mean, the only reason I believe that we must have felt pretty good about it is because we approved them some months ago.
Right, several.
That, I don't, I don't know. I, I don't remember having huge numbers jump out at me as the city share. But I, I don't remember, so.
When was the REIT grant actually passed?
I, I don't remember.
Was it passed before we budgeted?
No, I believe.
No, we budgeted, no. We, we didn't know we got the REIT grant until September.
So we'll find out in a couple of weeks. So I, I'm making a request that the 19th, January 19th meeting be rescheduled for a week later. I'm going to be unavailable the 19th, but I will be available the 16th or the 26th. And at that meeting, we felt like we probably needed to have a budget workshop before our council meeting. So if everyone's agreeable to that, I need a motion to reschedule to the 26th.
And I looked at the calendar, so that means we'll have meetings two weeks in a row.
Which for the Max Beatty hearing, we need to scoot this down the road, you know, because we've had some delays because of.
Knowing that the, you not making the meeting is unavoidable, I would make the motion that we move the next meeting to the 26th. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So as part of that, then is everybody agreeable to, to maybe start a budget workshop at 5:15?
On the 26th?
Yeah. From the numbers that, that Deanna has, has talked about, we're in really good shape. So we need to just go over that and, and start that process. But it looks pretty agreeable.
Would you want to have a workshop before you go in for surgery? So Deanna's got some time to work on it again? I don't know how, how she is on her schedule, but I don't know if a week and a half would help you or not, Deanna.
Yeah, I was, you know, I would be happy to get, you know, I would be happy to get all the hard copies out to you. I was going to provide them tonight and then we had some things happen today. But I can give them out to you this week so you can start reviewing them. If you want to have a special meeting for that time, I'm fine.
Would that help you in your office when everything is being thrown on you right now?
Yeah, I mean, it's fine either way. Yeah.
I mean, we could easily meet a week from tonight if we wanted, just to keep it on a Tuesday.
If it doesn't, if it doesn't matter either way, we can just let me schedule that.
I don't care which day, I just, I know that with no mayor sitting in the office full-time, that there's been a lot thrown on Deanna and she's only one person she can really do so much. She's only required to work 40 hours and I know she's working more.
Yeah, it's, it's early, Deanna, it's, it's your call.
No, I'm, I'm fine on the 26th with the budget workshop.
Budget workshop on the 26th.
26th.
Yep.
At, at 5:15, that gives us 45 minutes.
I'm okay with 5:15, you?
Yeah.
Okay?
Yep.
Steve? Yeah.
I don't even think we did a motion on that, do we?
No.
A little workshop. Okay, public discussion. Okay, well, so we have some business that we have to discuss in a closed session. So we're going to have to ask
For a second.
All of our visitors to leave while we go into closed session.
Can't we just go in the office? So they can stay here, maybe they want to stay.
Yeah.
There's nothing really else on the agenda for this last cycle.
They want to stay for what? I don't think they want to stay the end of the meeting.
Well, they're here, but they've got to leave now. And they're, they're going to come back in after the closed session.
So mayor and council reports now then, before we go into closed session?
Yeah.
Are we able to do that on the weekend? Then we could just do that now.
Okay.
And then that weekend of meeting.
Yeah.
So how do you do the last item then?
Yeah, we go into a closed session, so everyone has to leave.
Right.
Right, but the motion has to be out in front of the public.
Yeah, it is. You, you're more welcome to come back.
All right, well, we'll do the mayor and council reports and then we'll go into closed session and
And then come back.
That'll be Deanna. Okay, so the only thing I have to report is Troy resigned.
Thanks, Chris, I appreciate that.
Well, it was kind of up in the air for a while, but we have proof. It's in your.
I have it tonight. I, I have something I want to bring up, being it's the new year. Charlie brought up a comment on knowing what's going on. I myself don't get up here all the time and sit in city hall or check on things. And I hope this year that the council, we can get together as five and have all the dialogue, have all the communication, rather than someone coming in, not having any communication or dialogue except the agenda and come in and things are kind of pitter-pat and done before the meeting starts. I mean, I struggle to try to do the best job I can do as a councilperson, but I really feel that a lot of times I'll speak for myself that I'm left out of communication and dialogue and I'm kind of tired of that. And so I hope that you or whoever sits in the mayor's seat chooses to have dialogue with all five members so that we all make the right decisions when it comes up to city business, rather than let senior plans hearing major same things. So what is your proposal? It's not a proposal, it's just a request out that whoever sits in the chair in this new year, that we all talk. When Chad was here, you, you've been around a long time.
Yeah.
Chad's informed me that he used to call council people and not as forums and discuss things that were going on with city business rather than just getting it on the agenda. And I think that you're informed that all five got it. And so I'm just asking for that personal request, that everybody gets the same dialogue, same communication, same input so that when you come to a meeting, maybe things you wouldn't need to ask because you heard it in communication amongst the group. I don't think that's way out of line and I'm just hoping that that takes place in only one.
Well, I do know that. From Chad's comments to you, he wasn't trying to communicate to you what was going on. He was selling what he wanted.
But it's a matter of agreement.
We all knew it. We all had good conversations with him.
And we do have email.
We have emails, we have this.
Emails are communicated constantly. I think Troy was constantly posting emails, hey, I'm at fault because I don't check my email yearly. That's my own, that's my own fault. But that is a great way too for us to all be informed about things that are going on and the communication. To me, all is up there, can't we? I mean, we have something that, I mean, all of us.
Yeah, I agree.
Not, well, I mean, one or two or whatever they can report on email.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's interesting, Steve. I, you know, I'd have a lot of conversations with Chad, but, but they were more personal than discussing city business. So I don't know what other conversations we had with people. As far as anytime I needed to know something, I just, I always had to reach out to the mayor. And you're suggesting there should be a better way?
I'm suggesting that maybe reaching out, it shouldn't have to reach out all the time. The dialogue should come from the top down. I shouldn't have to call and reach out for information. It should come down, I don't know what the information is, but you or whoever has the information, put it down. Deanna's been good about sending stuff out. But putting the information out or calling and letting them know some things, because I'm going to be perfectly honest, I've been around here in the last year with Troy, I'm not going to get negative, but I've had very little dialogue with him, very little email with him. And I think that's very unprofessional. So I'm just going to put that on the record and I'm hoping positively in the new year that we do things a little bit better as a group and not certain people.
Yeah, because I didn't have any dialogue with Troy either. I'm a neighbor and I never talked to him, so I, no, I mean.
I never got any replies.
Communication is very important though, and I definitely also agree that through 2021, and then it can get as much attention as you can.
Fine.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a good point. You know, maybe I'm a little out of touch with that because as pro temp, I did talk. And so I guess I didn't realize that maybe it didn't get any from them. But it looks wonderful.
That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, absolutely.
Oh, I actually wanted to, I hate to even say anything about it, but the location up there on Gilbert, by the porridge area, just past Grand, where all the sledding and all of that is happening. Have you, has that ever been discussed at any of these council meetings? You know, I live just up past there, we drive by all the time, oh my goodness, over the weekend. And hey, I think it's awesome. I love seeing those people out there. I love seeing them sledding.
All the cars?
It's just wonderful, but the cars are definitely concerning and there are a lot of them. I mean, close a dozen or so more. And they're parked kind of up on the side and some in the road and it's coming just past that bridge. And I just worry that a car is going to be hit, a person is going to be hit. I just worry about the dangers there. I was curious about who owns that property we do. Is that ever something we could discuss at some point of putting some sort of a parking space down there? Or maybe at the end or? We don't own the end piece of the corner. Just this spot right below.
The whole, that's a basin, that's where it's usually.
Yeah. Yeah.
It is dangerous. I totally agree with you. I don't find it really, it's hard to pay. They're parking in the street, it's a hill and you can't see where the hill is. It's a bit of a west.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it's, it's an accident waiting down.
It does. And kids and it's just, I don't know, it's too bad. It's fun for them and I, I'm all for that.
Yeah, I, it is suggestive, right?
Well, I don't know if that's just me, because I can just speak from experience. It's just been kind of accepted practice as long as I've been here. I don't recall any accidents ever happening. And I'm not saying, taking away from the possibilities and, you know, it's not just going to be dangerous, but I'm not aware of anything that's ever happened. And it has just been kind of accepted practice. That being said, I totally agree with what you're saying.
Can we kind of, can we kind of make that a priority to get the snow removed as much as possible on the inside?
Yeah, this last fall, we barely got it onto the road.
Oh, it's awful. It's not too bad when they just park on the one side, they didn't park on both sides.
Myself and my kids have been on there.
I know. See, my, my family has two, it's such an awesome hill. It's like perfect for that. I just wish we had like a parking location for them to park and then get up and walk the sidewalk to go up there, but.
Are they on both sides?
Well, it's generally only one side.
Yeah. Usually it's just, because we could control that, usually not for both sides.
Yeah, I think that if we started seeing cars piling up on both sides, we would certainly ask the officers to pay attention to that and have them at least parking on one side.
Yeah.
Yeah, I haven't noticed it on both sides.
No.
Okay, that's all right.
I want to, I want to commend the street department again. I live on the main street where they walk them down 100 times. I love it. They do a great job cleaning the streets, yesterday they're out going outside, pushing the snow back. Really keeps the streets open and makes the city look like we're open for business. I do appreciate that, Chris, that's a long, good guys. I like seeing that.
I would have to second that. I think Evansdale Street Department is the best job ever. I drive all over waterloo streets. I have family that lives off of Olympic Drive. Some of those streets don't even ever get done over there with the amount of taxes and things that they pay. So I think Evansdale does it awesome.
Thank you.
I agree. Uh, anyone else? Okay. Please don't ask me to move on.
Thanks for coming, Derek.
Yeah.
We haven't seen the last.
That's good to hear.
I'm retired now. I got, I got all kinds.
You got all kinds of tired looks.